This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the
Public, for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the stage. First order of business, we have a request from Bill Billigan, who is speaking on behalf of the Mirror Lake Watershed and is presenting a project that's been, I think, on the drawing boards for several months. It looks like it's made very good progress, both in terms of the design and presentation. So, Bill, without further ado, you have the floor.
Thank you for putting me on the agenda. The Mirror Lake Watershed Association would like to place an informational kiosk at the beach area to contain specifically three signs. One involving the information about invasive species that we want to be aware of. Another one is for clean, drain, and dry, which shows how to get rid of any invasive species so that we can protect the water body. And another one is the ongoing prevention of feeding the waterfowl, specifically ducks, so that we can try to inform more people about not what what feeding causes and why you shouldn't do it. So, we've been working on some signage for a little while now, and we'd like to get some signs in place this summer if we could. The kiosk is going to be double-sided, is what we anticipated. I included two very similar designs of the kiosk where you can put signs on both sides of that. We can put it perpendicular to the road, to the walkway as you enter from the east over by the Hampton Inn. And that on the side by the tennis court is probably preferred, so it doesn't block the view of the lake when you're walking around the lake, but also would be close enough that you could read it and the information is there. So, the kiosk would be double-sided. We have three signs that would go on one side. The other side we could use for additional signage that the village might want to use or other groups might want to present on the other side. There are two other areas that we'd like to put signage. One is down on the railing by the toboggan slide where we've seen people feeding the ducks. So, that would be a do not feed the ducks or waterfowl sign. And also, the more important area for the duck sign, the waterfowl sign, is at the, at Mids Park. And the best place we feel it to put those is right by the waterline and low, so people can see them right when the ducks are coming in for feeding, instead of having them off on the side or up near the street. I think it's important to get the information to where the action is. So, we'd like to see what the village thought of the sign designs, the kiosk possibility, so that we can go back to the appearance committee and try to finalize some plans and get things rolling.
Questions? Comments? Observations? I think this is a pretty good proposition, something that, Bill, I think you and I a year ago were walking through the beach park having the discussion that really has brought this to what I remember thinking would be really helpful if the messages could all be presented, so that people can see them all together, as opposed to scattered along different locations.
Yes. It is a result of that conversation we had down there where we saw what the signs looked like presently and needed to be upgraded. So, that's why we went ahead with getting some signs designed with the information we thought was important and finding a couple of designs for kiosks that are not, they're not large kiosks, they're not similar, they're a smaller version, basically, of what's at Dootrow Park, so that they are, have minimal impact, visual impact, but also are aesthetically pleasing.
You and I have had that conversation, Bill. It's our, that one's speaking. As long as it's all the lines of what's in Dootrow Park, which I think is a classy-looking kiosk, I'm all for it.
Any questions on the placement of the kiosk?
Seeing the one down there, it's heavy timbered with shingle roof.
Hey, Bill, in Mids Park, where I know you said you wanted it down by the lake, where are we going to do horizontal or blocking the lake? Are we going to do vertical, so people can see it, but still not obstruct the view of the lake? Like, where was the placement again?
The placement, it would be low. You know, there's boulders down on the shoreline at Mids Park?
Yes.
I think the best thing to do would be to put them in amongst the boulders, like two signs down there, but have them only stick out of the water as far as you could read them. They wouldn't be tall, they would be low. So, when you're looking down at the ducks, you would see the signs, too.
Is this by the, if you were looking at the lake, here's the benchell, closer to the benchell or sort of like right in the middle?
I would put two signs and put them down by the sitting wall down there, so that one would be closer to the benchell and one would be closer to the house, you know, space and lots, so there'll be two down there.
Okay. That makes sense. Yeah. Okay.
Also, I also included an email from Dean, who, we went to the appearance committee and presented to the appearance committee, and they had some some concerns about, and also ideas about Mids Park being more of a comprehensive sign. He had sent me an email and thought that maybe a comprehensive assignment might be better at Mids Park. We talked as a group and we felt that the signs for the ducks would be more important and better read if they were individually down by the lake, with a more comprehensive sign, more like similar to the entrances, if that's what the village preferred, for dogs, smoking, things like that, so that, you know, the rules for Mids Park would be more prevalent as you entered. It could contain all three messages or four messages, whatever the village board wanted to, but that wasn't part of what we wanted to do. We could help do that at some point, but at this point, I think it's more important to get the do not feed the duck signs down by the water.
I think the designs look good, Bill, and I think the signage is absolutely on the mark. If I, if we had the resources, I would almost like to see a kiosk at each beach park entrance, the one on our side, as well as the one across from the Hampton, because they both have similar activities going on, where people are loading boats into the lake, either the kayaks, the kayak racks in that area, or on the other side, but we need to start someplace. And I think, I think, I think the good thing, Mids Park, my sense there is certainly the waterfowl's important, and I agree that putting them down where the ducks are able to read them for themselves might be helpful. The clean, drain, and dry really addresses itself to the location where boats are being placed in the water, or kayaks. And the invasive species, I think, frankly, I think we ought to have that sign displayed at every one of our points where we have an access, a visual access to Mirror Lake. It's a constant reminder. But having said that, we have to start someplace.
Agreed. And I do think we do want to, these are the areas that we thought were of primary importance, but expansion is always possibility.
For sure. Any other thoughts, gentlemen? I think it's fair to say, Bill, you have our endorsement. Is that, is that, because I think you're going back to the appearance committee once more?
Yes. We're on the agenda for Wednesday's appearance committee, so we will discuss it again with them. I know there's, they're working on a major improvement plan for Peacock Park, and they want this to fit in with that plan.
That would be a priority this year along with the duck sign. I do think at Mids Park, maybe one main street, that one of the sidges that we probably, is probably not, and again, depending on when we can get to designing and go a little further here, is I hear complaints about dog species in Mids Park that people don't pick up, which is disturbing, to say the least, but, and that might, that might be a topic for when we're designing something more for Mids Park in the future to keep in mind.
Yes. I think it's, I think it's important. We do, I know for Songs of Mirror Lake concerts, we've had to try to enforce the policy of no dogs in the park, and we get some pushback from some people. So, it is better to have more, have it a little more visible, so that dogs, so that the owner, dog owners can see that we're trying not to have any dogs in the park, but I know there's, it's used all the time for your walking dogs, you know.
And unfortunately, I think the park becomes an inviting place where people that are residing along the main street and maybe others that are walking their dogs, it's, I think it's natural to go off the sidewalk and go onto the grassy part of the park, which unfortunately is where we're trying to keep the surface clean, so that people can spread out and sit on the grass surfaces. So, it's kind of, there's clearly conflict there, but at the very least, I think there should be a message that's very clear that they're expecting to pick up as they put anywhere on the sidewalk, anything that they're, that they leave behind. That, human beings that leave trash behind. There's a couple of things.
Bill, would it be helpful if I got a picture of the kiosk down at Dootrow Park and got it to Dean, so they could have it for the appearance committee meeting?
I already have one.
Okay.
And I can include, I can include for the, for the meeting, dimensions, so that they could see scale relative to what's already existing at Dootrow Park.
Would we, would we want to authorize the placement of these as Bill is requesting now or endorsing this, so that Bill can move forward with the project?
I'd be happy with offering, as long as we can prove final design.
Does that work for you, Bill?
I'm sorry, didn't hear that last part.
Arc would be willing to put a motion on the table that we give you our blessing to go forward with the placement of these, as long as we have one opportunity to look at any final design that may come about by virtue of a subsequent meeting with the appearance committee or otherwise.
Okay.
So, you put that, one second motion. Scott seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Good. You're good to go, Bill. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill, for your, this is, the design work posters is really nice, pleasant looking.
Yeah. There was a quip and a bet between Neve Dunn and Sandy Bissell. They did a great job on them.
Well, as long as our feelings to them.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We have the village coordinates from the meeting on May 21st. I review them. I don't see any omissions or, does anybody else have any issues with anything to bring up? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then sort of accept and let's present it. The next item we have is, a while ago, we discussed the possibility of creating a, what is a new position for the village. And that is that of a technical coordinator, a technical coordinator or information technician position. It's currently something that we do not have the resources for, and yet we have a significant amount of work that we could be doing, but otherwise are lacking in. It has to do with GPS mapping. It has to do with taking some of the work that is being done in our various departments and putting it into a GIS database that would allow our departments to, what's the word I want to use? Come up to modern times, maybe. But also, we've seen in the demonstration in the electric department, how useful having information or towards the water ducts itself at the scene, being able to bring up information and data on that particular case, our installation and not have to go back and forth to the home base to try to figure it all out. So, as a result of that, we had a previous work session. A description was created for a technical coordinator. It was subsequently submitted to the civil service, was put out for their review, and we have received indication from them that the civil service certifies the appropriate civil service title for this position described as follows. It is titled Technical Coordinator. It's a competitive position. And at this point in time, what I would ask, it's a new position, I would ask for a motion as a formally adopt and put this job description into our inventory of the second? Second? Peter made the motion. Arc has seconded. Any further discussion on the creation of this position? It could be.
I guess that's, it's being treated.
Yes, yes, it's, it could be, but it doesn't necessarily happen. And actually, the way, the way it's been structured, it is not, it's not a position that is assigned to any particular department in the village. It actually reports to the mayor, as to all of our other department heads. However, I would say that a great deal of the work, it's technical work that will have this position working either with the department heads, collaborating with the department head, or, and at the same time, collaborating with this financial information with the accounting office people. So, if you, the nearest thing that I've seen described as tool is Paul, for a while, was using the IT personnel from the list of town until he left. And that was helping us with, in that case, we were redesigning our this is more, this is more implementing software could be using. We have the data in some cases, like water and sewer, we have data that I three or four years ago. Now, it's been sitting on a shelf for a while, this particular step to make it useful. So, hopefully, we can reach back, call that back, and try to make some use of the investment that we made. It was made at the request of DUC. So, I don't want to think that I know this is the part of the job. What's your, what are you thinking about vacation rounds? That's right. Vacation rounds, I was talking with Patrick, who's doing this currently for the electric department, the park kind, and we were talking about things like mapping our parking spaces, for example. It would be interesting if we had, if we had an accurate mapping of our parking places and we tried to act on these decisions about how many here, how many there. And you all remember how difficult it was, because depending on who you talked with, they started coming from different places. This will eliminate that and give us net control. For something as simple as that, certainly, I know I know I've had some discussions with Dean. Dean thinks that maybe there is another way that you can see, but it's just critically important before we revise the land use codes to reflect maybe neighborhoods that we want to protect from pardon? Post compliance. They will give us the addresses. They'll give you a but then how that gets imposed on our imposed is not the right term. How much you promote.
I think that's both.
How it gets imposed on our current position and how we can modify those statistics to try to if in fact, that's what the land use code rule likes to do. This is, that's all of our so it's a you should be able to telephone call. And more, it's just about size of fire, size of shut off. Also, also, what we're doing is running out of field work. To know where stuff is in the ground or out, maybe not being currently there. There's, and again, a lot of the, a lot of the work has been done. This is, we haven't realized any of that, other than saying that it's it's on the shelf. This, this position's created, is it going to be funded? We will, we will, we did, we will allocate it from some departments. Which is really what we do with, we do that with the board, we do it with the pressure, we do it with the office people. And there's always, this can be done the same way, because it has to have this putting it under one department head would probably not be worth it. Only asking all the questions tonight. I actually wasn't after the tree, even though it's green and stuff, but I didn't sort of I think the other incentive here is we never had anybody on staff that had this capability. And we have a park kind personnel who is probably available to us for two years. At least that's what he's indicated. And, you know, I think we'd like to take advantage of that time and get as much of this work done as we can. No, I think creating a position is the first step, and then that can be turned and they already did. He's, 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 he's ready. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now, I know how Art feels from time to time. I just had a quick question. So, the vote already happened, and I support it, but I just, I have a quick sort of question. You had mentioned several sort of projects, and the structure is that he is working under you. How, what's, what's his priority, I guess? What are we looking to have accomplished by the time he leaves? And I know there, with the caveat that we need some flexibility, depending on if something develops that needs his expertise, what are we looking for him to accomplish? Because he certainly has a tremendous skill set. Other just, you had mentioned land use code, residential zones, parking, electric, overall combining GIS map between different departments. That's quite a bit. I just was hoping to have a better understanding of the priority of, or the hierarchy of need, of responsibilities.
It is enough to keep him busy for probably the next two years, without question, probably beyond that. But I would say the priorities right now are to, we have to finish what we're doing in the electric department. And I would like very much to get the water and sewer, which has been an ongoing project now for all the years I've been here. Trying to get that done, because it has incredible value to these, to our people, I'm sorry, our employees when they're out in the field working. And also, it gives us a full database of knowledge that can be used not only, not only within the new visual department, but as I mentioned, if you, if you can go out in the field with a with a notepad or an iPad and bring up, bring up these databases, you can, you can get a, you can get a sense right off the spot of what you're standing on or over, or whereas today, we don't have that capability. So, it's partly that. Mindy, Mindy will, I think you can speak to the the data aspects of this and how they impact on the operations of our accounting department, if you would like.
Sure. Patrick will primarily, he's going to take the maps for the current GIS that he has for water and sewer and implement those, but at the same time, he has a great knowledge of the electric, because he's done all the GIS mapping for them already. So, he will also help in the data input into the new software that will track the accounting function and the overall property for the electric plant. It's a $30 million plant that has to be maintained and is crucial to our rates. So, he has been working, and actually, he's the project coordinator for that particular project, because I took over the treasurer's position and I just couldn't, I couldn't do it all. I have jumped back into it slightly, so that we're all on the same page, and we can make sure we maintain our budget and stay where we're supposed to be. He will not be doing the data entry just solely himself, because that is a lot of work. I will have potentially Megan Hart in the billing office, because we have three ladies there also helping with that data entry. But it will give him a very broad knowledge of what is in the electric system, in conjunction to what he did already with the Arc GIS system. But the water and sewer, we already have mapped from a prior issue that we had, so he will be importing that data into the GIS system. He's already met with Tracy LaHart two or three times, he said, to kind of get a feel for what they're looking for. He's just waiting on the maps, so that he can start that input. But those will be the primary functions, is to get everything GIS'd in and get everything to where we're functional. The other projects will come later on.
Okay. So, there is, what it sounds like to me, there is a very articulated set of objectives for him, some clear, concrete objectives that need to be accomplished. That seems to be the sense I'm getting.
Yeah.
I just, it seems, working under one department, working for the electric, but then moving out, I can see how, just with my experience here at the board, there sometimes are issues that come up that can be pressing, that can pull them away, and we just don't want three years to go by and have a bunch of half-completed items, because
I will say he's very, very organized. He knows what he has to do. He puts together a plan of attack, and he heads it off. I think his time for water and sewer purposes, because we already have those maps and they've already been located versus they basically had to start from scratch, and he went through all the books at the electric plant to get that system up and running. It will go a lot faster, which will free up some of his time, but we want him to take his time with it at the same time, to make sure that it's done correctly. It will go a lot faster, which will free up some of his time, but we want him to take his time with it at the same time to make sure that it's done correctly. So we don't have something half assed. But he is very well aware and he's actually very excited to work with the water and sewer plant. He's like, it'll be a nice change of pace. But having him broken out between the, the four funds as far as how we pay him will allow us to, he's not under one person or another. He's not getting pulled in a direction. If he has something else to do, it all goes through the mayor's office. That way we can in a sense, the mayor can distinguish if that is a higher priority than what he's currently working on. That way one department doesn't get more than the other.
Do we know when the test is going to be given?
I think they have to create a test at this point.
Yes, that is right.
Sometime in the next two years, Jenna.
But we can hire the test as we have done other positions. Yes, no, I wanted to be, and we're talking about him, but I wanted to make sure we knew we could, it would be provisional.
Yes.
So and again, the, the, this is the first step, which is to get the position on board. So we I think I think the bill just next step will, we have, we haven't actually appointed him to the position. I am, I will say that certainly it is a competitive position. I'm looking at this as a probable lateral move within the organization. And, and that will, will bring up subsequent to this meeting. Any other questions on that? If not, we'll revisit an old item from the meeting and that is the travel for Francis Track.
We just first and second.
I thought we voted on it.
Wait, I'm sorry. That's a long time ago.
Glad somebody was paying attention. And any of the, the next item is a revisit of the authorization for Sergeant Strack to attend the Armorer Recertification Program in Hampshire, July 13, 14. This was presented at the last meeting. There was a question raised as to any, any issues regarding the current coronavirus limitations that are out there. And I believe Anita, you did some research on that.
NICAOM had no specific recommendations. They asked, is it necessary? Is there another time that he can do it? And the answer seems to be no, he really needs to do it next month. And I, NICAOM agrees with me that there is a 50% chance it'll be canceled if, if it's decided that people aren't ready for such big group meetings. I think we should just proceed and see what happens.
I think that's reasonable. We're, we're seeing that just about every event, large and small, anything over 10 people is at best, it's tentative, it's a tentative commitment until we get clearance that the event can either take place or we get an indication that it's been canceled. I think that makes sense and obviously if Sergeant Strack had any concerns about that, he could also make that same call. So I think, I think what we should do, I understood from the chief that delaying on this also puts a safe risk of not having the slot available, should he make a late decision. So any further discussion, question? If not, all in favor? Any opposed with the understanding that it would, that appears to be the answer? Anything else to come from the clerk section tonight?
No, there's not.
This is, this is a short In that case, then we'll pick up the press items before I do that. Mindy, is there anything that you would like to take?
One thing about the warrant, I, I know somebody came in and reviewed it, but I would like to note that there are two NIPA payments in it. There's only one actual payment going out. We had a issue back in January where it got put through the warrant as a check and actually went out as a wire. So we voided the check and in essence, we voided it from the system. So Tracy had to add it back in. That's why the, the warrant itself looks as as big as it is, but it's actually $380,000 less because we only have one NIPA payment versus two. And also to know Craig and I will be working on the budget tomorrow to try and button up the last few straggling things so that we can present it to the board.
Do we have to reapprove the one from Taylor?
I don't think, it's in the warrant because it had to go back through the accounts payable process, but it's physically already been approved. Cause we've already paid it. So the grand total of the warrant is actually 682,478 dollars and seven cents. Versus the $1,062 that's on the paper. But she had to account for it because it physically had to run through accounts payable this time. But there's no check and there's no payment going out for the second one.
Any other questions? That's, that's, that's where the accounting and trying to track this stuff. So in, in the system insists on certain entries to, so that they don't literally fall out of sight. That's really what I think Mindy just described for us. The whole approval keeping. You all have received the detail of the listing. Any, with that explanation, any, any other questions? If not, I'm wishing we could authorize the payment of the bills as described by you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Old business. Main Street project, hasn't been a lot that's developed since the last meeting, other than the fact that I'm advised by our, by I'm just wrong. That the submissions for DOT, the final submissions, I guess, hopefully create a work permit for us are, were printed over the weekend, are being received tomorrow in Ivan's office and will be hand carried to DOT's offices in Albany on Thursday when he has a meeting with Christina Crowell. So with that said, and again, there was a question raised by, I think Liz, enterprise reporter in the last meeting about public information sessions. And I had commented that I still had every intention that you want to somehow get this information out in public. Still not permissible for us to have a public gathering. However, with your permission, I'm, I'm going to request that we come up with a media presentation that we can put out in whatever form makes the most sense. Hopefully by this work session Tuesday, I can decide what that would be to you.
Is there a reason you're not just having a Zoom meeting? Is there a reason you're not just having a Zoom meeting? I mean, you can't gather people in a room, but you could put out chat room.
Yeah, how we conduct a, a meeting like that with multiple, I've not managed that complicated, to be honest with you. Maybe I'm just, at my age, I'm just not, I honestly, I'm not 100% confident that we could do the job that way. I do think, I do think though, that we want to hear the public's input and I'm hopeful that maybe we can create something where they could, in a chat room, come back with their impressions, their questions, or hopefully some praise. Also, I'm hopeful by that time that we have at least a a vision of what, what our committee has worked on and what the committee's worked on for that parking lot. Think we were expecting that one. So there's a lot there. The, the critical part of the project right at the moment is, is try to keep the I want to keep a commitment to the community that we're putting this information out and we're sharing it as best we can. There doesn't appear to be a day coming soon when, when we can go back to doing things the way we were traditionally accustomed to doing them, which I would greatly prefer. But having said that, I, I, I guess, to coin a phrase, somebody's going to have to teach the old dog some tricks here. That would be, I'm the old dog. So it is what it is, but we're going to do our best to put the project out there. The project is well designed. It's had a lot of effort put into it by various members that have been on that Main Street discussion group since last fall. And I, I, I think to not conclude and bring it to the community, it's just something that I would, I would like to be able to figure this thing out. So that everybody is on the same page. In any event, this is the project that were we not to go forward with it. It's got 20 years worth of different generations of planning engaged in it. It has, it has significant impact on the community in terms of being able to maintain the water delivery service. And year old water main on the Main Street that needs to be slightly improved. And it has to meet no standards for water delivery that up until now, Main Street has intended. Only recently it's had to become concerned with. In addition to that, of course, we have the main, the Mural Lake issue of trying to get the greatest amount of stormwater and contaminated fluids away from the lake as possible. And this is the one project that offers the most opportunity of any of the work that we're doing around Mural Lake to improve on that situation. Aside from that, it also produces in the end, will produce a smoother Main Street and hopefully a sidewalk that is will be more pleasing to people than what we currently have up there.
Safer crosswalks.
And safer crosswalks, absolutely. So there's a lot in it for a variety of reasons that we need to address and I feel that, I feel that the people that have been engaging and giving their time deserve for this to get out in the public and certainly we got to measure the public's response to it with, with some narrative detail. If that helps. I have nothing new to bring up under land use code update. Have any more meetings?
We have, we meet every week. If you remember where we were the last three weeks, that's where we still are. Mike Orde, Charlie came up with a list of definitions were hard for him, you need a clarification on. That's what we're still going through. We're probably going to be doing that for the next two or three weeks. Our hope is that once we get these definitions straightened out, that they're public hearing, let people comment on them. We'll make changes that his life will be easier and then we'll be able to move into things like the vacation rule issue.
Did, did a message from John Hopkins on behalf of ZDA get to the steering committee?
It hasn't. It was this week I heard about. I may be tomorrow morning.
I, I had seen some concerns that the ZDA had, that John is requesting the address. I will I will forward that to you and Dean.
Okay. Well, I can say tomorrow morning, Thursday's on me. Craig, on the appeals board, the town had one person different than the village.
That was resolved meeting and they, they conformed, they selected the candidate. The one different candidate that we have. They did not have that candidate initially. In fact, he didn't have three of them. Main, Main Street Reimagined. Well, the group that's putting Greg Morris Larry has, has been working on that project. It was a high percentage of the Main Street businesses appeared to be interested in moving forward with it. And I did take the time, I communicated with the Department of Transportation. I had the application for presumably on Thursday, but Ronnie probably more likely will get me great manning pieces to go with that. Whether that project moves forward or not, I can't wait until the end of the month to, to start the discussion.
How lengthy, how detailed is this application?
I am embarrassed to say it's, it's, who's the owner? Who's the sponsor? It's very simple. The whole thing is the traffic diversion plan and a description of what we're doing. What we're proposing from the Golden Arrow, starting near the Golden Arrow to number one Main Street. And
So we don't have to detail where we're using.
We do, we do have to show the plan because it isn't just simply closing, at least in my vision. It isn't just closing off the whole east side of Main Street. It is, it is creating areas where there will be retail or outdoor dining activity proposed, but leaving other areas open for deliveries, service deliveries, bus walk, EBA parking, those types of things. So I, the last time I saw Bill Moore, our chief, was working with Greg to, to create something that would, that would work rather than shutting the whole all of it down. No idea where this is going. I will, I will report to you that there have been other individuals, one or two who have communicated with me their displeasure with the whole idea. And they happen to be, one of them happens to be a significant taxpayer in the community who felt that that it was going to put too much traffic going around Mural Lake. And I said, well, that's not the diversion plan. The diversion plan is to take it, let stuff sit back down in your open and circulate it counterclockwise. But I, I can't say 100% certain that some cars won't go around Mural Lake as well. So I, we, we thinking about it and working with Mary Jane, Lawrence at Rose. They have put out today what in effect is a community survey. And we'll, we'll get, we'll today. It's very quick. It's two or three screenings. You, you check the yes or no and and we turn, we'll have a little better sense to get to the community of our cities.
And how is she marketing that?
She has, she has a one, two, nine, four, six way of getting to all of four, six addresses. I thought that, you know, just from this board's perspective, we do have the ability to listen to all sides of the issue and I, I will say that I was reading the other evening, resolution that the town of Breckenridge, Colorado passed, they're doing exactly the same thing. It's also, it was in that same evening, I got an email directed to me that was describing the city of Amsterdam in the Netherlands, which is not really comparable to Lake Placid. But the article was talking about during this coronavirus period, the city had become a void of its tourists and Amsterdam is a tourist city. So the native population was finding, was refinding their city. In fact, then one of our local citizens thought that would be wonderful if that happened here. I, I think it is happening here. Our businesses, to the extent that there has been no tourist traffic here, urban traffic has been keeping several of our restaurants and some of our curbside delivery retail stores, it's been keeping their lights on, which is all good. So I, I think we're learning from this period of times, some things that are interesting. I, I think in the long run, we'll certainly, in our next work session, we'll, we'll have that information. And we will discuss the ramifications of what we determine is, is the best route to, to take going forward. But I, I felt it was important to pay attention to various aspects of this. It's not, it's not something that is, I, I think the other thing that I think I speak for the whole board when I say this, it's developing this so it's tastefully done and it's not, it's not creating a arty city atmosphere on Main Street is what we're trying to do. So if in fact, we reach that point, you know, certainly our noise ordinance is, is going to play a role here. I think there are other issues that we're all concerned about in terms of how we, how we conduct our community, the summer, so that, you know, we do the best we can by people that are obviously uncertain whether that's in public, local residents, work, likewise our local business operators, whether they be food and beverage or, or retail. I think there's a lot at stake here and hopefully we'll get it right. Any other thoughts on that? Okay, moving on to mayor items. You have in your packets, the annual drinking water all year report for 2019. This is something that we do annually and then subsequently, this is posted on our village website already for the public to read. I thought the interesting points were that we have no, no perceived violations in terms of our water systems. We meet all the standards and they're all there for people to to review. We serve roughly 5,000 properties through about 1,400 service connection, I'm sorry, 5,000 permanent residents through 1,400 service connections. And typically up to about 10,000 visitors on a busy day in the summer. We produced 309 million gallons of water in 2019 that was pumped through the system. The daily average was 0.85 millions gallons per day. Recent years, that's been down. I can remember when it was closer to a million. Our highest single day was 1.66 million gallons and that happened August 5th last summer. There are, there are, and this points out, I think, I think for the reader to understand, not all water users are metered in Lake Placid. It is difficult to determine how much water we use to flush water mains by fires or this loss through the leaks. The average water rate paid by village residents last year was $241.84. While residential customers outside of the village were, were paying $304, which has been the case for a while. The additional rates that we assess to other classes of users are all found on the village website and they're there for anybody that cares to go looking for them. Overall, I think it's a good, good report. I'm happy to see that once again, one more year, we're, we're, we're meeting all of the required test standards for the water that we're consuming.
It's a great report. What places would wish they had water like to you?
Yes, they would. And I think we're, I think we're very proud of the water system overall. Hopefully we're going to keep it that way for years to come. The next item I want to just touch on briefly, our public restrooms, as you know, they were closed for a period of weeks as, as all public restrooms were in the area and state. We are, as of this morning, we have reopened, they have been repainted, cleaned. And they are reopened under State Department health standards that allow for them to be open. At a minimum, we will be required to disinfect the interior of those restrooms three times daily. Brad and I expect that we'll have to do it more frequently than that during July and August, depending on business. We have ordered devices that do disinfection, it's, they're called potters. And they, they will be used to do that disinfection. In the meantime, in order to get them open today, we purchased some kits which allow our people to, to go in and do the minimum disinfection that is needed. And hopefully, I think mid-June, we'll have the potters, we've ordered two of them. In the meantime, those potters are, are going to become a, an important element of our tool chest because they're not only used for, can be used for disinfecting restrooms, they can be used for disinfecting the interior of our summer corrals, given when they started by the county again. They can also be used to disinfect our playground equipment. So we're, we're anxious to have those provided as soon as we can possibly have them here. The beach house is not, the restrooms are not yet open downstairs in the beach house. Discussion with group, with Butch and Dick Martin indicates that they will be open on June 12th, when Butch will have personnel at beach so that they can be maintained appropriately. Any questions on that? It, it's amazing how many things that, starting back in the middle of March, got shut down, that we're now spending considerable amount of time figuring out how to reopen and do it so that the public is as safe as we can possibly keep them. I should also mention on restroom discussion that we created six gallon jug dispensers, four of which have been placed, two at our, one at each one of our Main Street public restroom facilities. And, and one at Miss Park and one at number one Main Street Park. If you're up there and you look at the Lake Placid sign when you're coming down Sterneck Avenue, you will see that it's prominently displayed on that sign. And I actually, over the weekend, saw people using it to disinfect their hands. We have two more that will be used at the beach park, when the beach park is, is actually open and up for business. Those we will keep refilled, we're using hand sanitizer that the state of New York is producing and through its core crap industries, which is part of the prison system. And is, is being delivered to us through the county. So at least, at least at this point in time, we're taking the steps that we can. Another initiative that we've done, and we give this a concert with Roast, is we, police department has these cards that are produced on the outside, it says, please stay six feet apart. And, and if you can't, wear a mask. It then turns over on the backside and says, thank you for visiting Lake Placid. Wash your hands, keep a distance of six feet, wear a mask. And they actually get a little plastic to them, which is kind of nice. These are being provided to our police officers. We are getting occasional complaints of groups seeing walking in the village or walking around Mira Lake more likely, which don't seem to be adhering to any of these standards. So rather than issue a citation, which, which could happen, we thought that a friendly citation in this form might be an appropriate thing for our officers to have. So our officers will be, will be carrying these with them. They will be able to approach a group and hand them these and hopefully it's a friendly way of trying to gain people's cooperation with base masks in particular, but also gatherings that are inappropriate without base masks. Obviously, the state has mechanisms under certain conditions. The state has, has mandated that a, a person violating these, and I would guess that it would be knowingly, would be, could be fined up to $1,000. So this just seems like Lake Placid's way of trying to make it a pleasant experience, well, and try to get people's cooperation. Obviously, if we don't, we have the other mechanism available. The way that's working right now is that the state of New York has a phone number which anybody can dial into and, and register a complaint. What happens then is Albany will direct that complaint back to the county where the complaint is, is issuing from. The county will then issue it to, if there is, a local law enforcement agency. In some cases, it may be the county sheriff, because not every township has a police department. In our case, it could either be Mike Ortegelli, or it could be our, our, our own local PD department for the village. So just so you're aware, that's the mechanism that, that addresses these. I, I'm not aware that we've had a significant number of complaints. I, I, I think I've seen a total of two in the last one. There may have been others that I, that didn't come across my desk. But just, just so you're aware, that's going to be a major, we, we believe, a major part of of getting back into July and August. So I, I just thought you should all be aware of the initiatives that are being taken and in addition to that, I mentioned earlier, of course, Bill Moore is working with the community in Main Street to see what we can do and that we can bring back to you as, as possibilities. Any other questions on that? Correspondence, we got a letter, a request from Pine Hill Homeowners Association Board of Correction, Correctors, I'm sorry, asking for a sign to be placed in the cul-de-sac when you drive into Pine Hill. That would note that parking is prohibited from November 1st to April 30th, 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM, as it is on all village streets, and we do maintain that, that road. I, I, this letter doesn't say, but they're talking about overnight parking. And I'm guessing that maybe, maybe they've had some of the same complaints or issues that we're having with vacation rentals in some of our neighborhoods. So I, I think it makes sense, if, if it's your pleasure, I will ask Brad to have such a sign placed where they're asking for it. We get a motion for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Hey, Commissioner, reports. Last correspondence about the ground, after that, he's like just had a test put on the side with tinting in. Where we did the new bricks coming up from the, towards the called beach. Take up, take up a section of the bricks.
I smell that girl already up.
Oh, and they already poured it?
No, they didn't pour it, they've taken the section out.
Okay, and then they're going to pour it after it's finished, just to see how it looks because you just never know. It's like it's put in and it dries.
I think that's.
And they don't like it, they just take it.
I know the sidewalk project hasn't gotten to the village line yet, the village portion, but they're, they're moving fairly quickly now in that direction. And.
The last I got, also, they're working in Nellwood Northway, or Northway going both ways.
Both ways. Well, so it looks like they're coming this way.
There will be, I know the structure work on.
My sense is maybe what they're planning on is getting the town portion done, it'll probably come to at least as far as the town line on there. I don't know what else, but it is, there's a lot, and there's two different crews working today. They were putting underground infrastructure in place. And that, of course, will continue and they'll be working, the village section has a fair amount of that sitting underneath the actual sidewalk. So a little more digging in that, in that section. But it, it is, I, I try to drive it once or twice a day and I will say that when we have people walking in bicycles and cars and we've got equipment working and working one way, that's a lot of activity going on in a tiny area. Yeah. So I think, I think we, we all want to keep, you know, just keep an eye on what's going and have all the issues that we might see. Thank you, Art. Anything else? I do, I do need an executive session this evening and maybe eight questions. Before I do that, if you ask, send any questions for anyone that has dialed in or signed in. And Janet, you're welcome to stay. Elizabeth, do you have any questions?
I don't, thanks so much.
Okay, anyone else? If not, I would like a motion to take this into executive session if we could, please. Then Peter seconds, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Thank you all for attending.